I have 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, starting with the Subcommittee Reps., Mr. Lewandowski, in the infrastructure, anything?
I'd add, in your...
Yes. Okay. And transportation?
Meeting in November.
Nothing?
Meeting in November.
In November, all right. Efficient methods, Mr. Lewandowski.
Actually, didn't have a meeting last night.
I didn't think we did have yet.
No, okay, no meetings.
Yeah, sorry, no meeting.
Nope. Uh, ordinance for you, Councilor Prosser.
No meeting, but we will be meeting.
Economic Development. Ms. Lee Clark?
Good evening. So, I wanted to start off that this is Small Business Month in October, so please make sure to support all of the small businesses that we have here in Pottstown. We will be working on updating the I Pick Pottstown gift cards, but in case you all forget, we do have one. So, the Yiftee cards are out there. You just go to yiftee.com, you put in Pottstown, Pennsylvania, and it comes up, I Pick Pottstown. It's really great because participating stores, you can just give that gift card, and somebody is not restricted to just one option. There is a list of businesses, and we have some new ones to add, so we'll be interested in working through that before the holidays. PAID will be working on that. Also, October 7th starts Manufacturing Week celebration, so look for PAID's social media to celebrate those manufacturers that we have in town, such as Dana, Precision Polymer, American Keg, the list goes on. Some businesses that I'd like you to take note of, SOAR is now open. I've seen a lot of great things on social media, they're going back, that is aerial yoga. I don't know how they don't get tangled up in all those scarves, I'd fall on my head, but they're doing great, and I hope that you will check that out. Also, there will be an option to the alley. The alley is getting ready, is our beer gardens, the weather has not really cooperated lately. It's gonna be cold on the weekend, they're hanging on to those last few days, but the alley will be expanding. It'll be closing its outside area, but it will be expanding into the building, and there will be some pizza and good things to drink.
All right.
So, that's a, that's a good thing.
Good.
So, that is my report. Last, well, last I would like to share with you that Fete en Blanc, I would say that it was a great success. Once again, we had beautiful evening, and we ran some preliminary numbers, and over 50% of the attendees are from outside of Pottstown, which is why PAID is involved, because we all know how wonderful a place Pottstown is, but to have people come and experience it that are from outside the area, that's really what we want. We want to spread that story, so...
Great.
We're, we're looking forward to that. People as far as Lancaster County came, so it's really a great thing.
Is that Yiftee or Yifty?
Yiftee, Y-I-F-T-E-E. Yiftee, yeah. Okay, should I move on to Land Bank?
Please.
So, Land Bank is moving along, we're moving through the settlement process on some properties, 707 Hamilton, we've exchanged a lot of paperwork with Genesis, we signed the agreements, and I need to get that final copy to you, I just realized. So, that has been signed, and we're working with Mr. Johnson on 208 Gale. So, that is my report.
Very good. Thanks. Emergency Services, Chief Hand?
We have no report tonight.
Okay. And Human Relations, Ms. Love and Gooden.
Good evening, Councilors, Council President and Madam Mayor. National Hispanic Heritage Month continues until October the 15th, and also, October is recognized as Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, National Disability Employment Month, National Bullying Prevention Month, and LGBTQ History Month. Lot going on. The Commission meeting was not held last night due to no quorum, and the Commission's next meeting is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, November the 8th, 22, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Good, thank you. Ricketts Center, anything to add, Councilor Kirkland?
Yeah, the, the programs that I've reported on before are still ongoing. The after-school program is really picking up, the, they're doing about 50 to 70 kids a day on that.
Hey.
On, on the after-school program. And it also now includes tutoring, so we're very excited about that. And the, if you remember, a few year, a few months ago, beginning of the summer, we were hitting 500 members at that point in time. We're up to 733 now. 733 with 38 new members in the month of September, so keep thinking about the Ricketts and support the Ricketts. They're doing well.
Great. Thank you. Library, Ms. Lipsky? There you are.
I'm here.
Alive.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me. I sent a report in, so that you all have a copy of a little bit more of a detailed report. I'm not gonna go over all of that, but if any of you have questions, please feel free to ask me. But I thought I'd share some of our statistics with you tonight. We had a library card signup month last month, it's a national thing, and we had 72 brand-new library cards just from the borough, and for the year, we're at 460 new library cards, so that's pretty great. We also have a circulation of over 37,000 books and materials, and we have over 5,000, well, we have 5,210 participants in programs. So, the library is definitely hopping, and we have a lot of things going on, and we encourage any and all to come out and visit some of our programming, and we have a lot of great things coming up. We might be having some hour changes for October due to some staffing issues, but we'll make sure we let everybody know. So, thank you so much.
May I ask?
You absolutely may.
Do we have any banned books?
We do not.
Thank you.
Which is wonderful, but we are prepared. So, we have the whole procedure that goes on, so we're ready. Hopefully, we don't have to use it.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsey, anything to add?
Um, yes, so, the school district, Stephen Rodriguez and Dr. Latonya White Springfield, they had a parents and guardian process for the students in case an event that they have to evacuate the school in an emergency, or a natural disaster or crisis near the school. So, that was on September the 28th and the 29th, and it was very informative how they, how the process worked, even if you have kids in high school, middle school, or elementary, there's a process with it. So, they have a location that they take the kids, and no one knows the location where they're going, and basically, the kids have a, some information on them, so that way their parent can, parent or guardian can contact them. So, that was, I thought that was good, that they set that emergency evacuation in place. Also, the September 15th School Board meeting, they spoke about the different committees, and one of them was Policy and Personnel Committee, that they had, they spoke about policy 840 and 841. 840 is for service dogs, and 841 is therapy dogs. So, they trying to do policies and updates focusing on the language related to the legal rights and clear codes and conducts. None of it impacts the students or employees, and there will be more research. Their special ed director, special education director is retiring, and will work about three days a week while they transition to new director. They're also thinking about hiring building subs versus the Kelly service, because they have them in the middle school right now, the building subs, so there's a sub in the building, and it works good in the middle school, so now the elementary schools is thinking about having that. And that was mainly the, the ones that I got out of the School Board meeting.
Okay.
That's into my report.
Good, thank you. Mayor's Report. Mayor Henry.
Before I get started, Joe, can I ask a follow-up question on the Ricketts report? The food distribution list, or stats, it says 2021, is that a typo? Do you know?
Um, I can ask Josh.
I was just curious, because in previous years, there's been a lot of other organizations that have donated food, and I only see, I see Archdiocese, which that's new, and Wawa.
Okay.
In the cluster, so I was just curious, who else has been?
I could follow up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, happy October. Forgive me, I fried my computer and, of course, didn't back it up, and so I have lost everything. And so, if I repeat any of this, I apologize, but I went through my calendar from last committee of the whole meeting, so I made sure, but I apologize if any is repeat. So, last month, I was honored to be the Speaker for the first class of the Tri-County Leadership Class, led by Jenna Armato, and I spoke about my leadership journey, and specifically, my quote-unquote "ridges to rags" story, and my personal experience with homelessness, which I was happy to find out really helped people open up in that class. So, thank you for asking me to speak. The NAACP, along with the county, and I believe Creative Health, hosted a healing event for victims of the explosion. I also attended a press release with Pottstown Plating. The renovations are absolutely amazing. If you have not poked your head in that building, please do so. It's phenomenal, the amount, the extensive amount of work that they have done in there is just amazing, and I can't wait till we get a business in there. And then, that evening, I attended the party of the year, so I want to thank Peggy Lee Clark and team for another home run, Fete en Blanc. Unfortunately, I only made it to half the room. There were so many people there, and a lot of people that I hadn't, you know, I didn't know, so I got to talk to a lot of new people, and the only thing I would request is maybe next time we have people walking around with hors d'oeuvres and drinks, so us people that are working can enjoy the party a little bit. I also want to thank Hobart's Run and the volunteers for cleaning up King Street. I joined the Citizens Leadership Academy for the Borough, and we've had three classes so far. If you haven't done this, please sign up. It's taken me, I don't know, I've been here 10 years, I've lived in the Borough, and this is the first time I've taken it, and it's really fascinating, and I want to thank Courtney High, she did the background class on, you know, the basics of the Borough, and then we had a class led by Dave Haywood, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works. If anyone is wondering why it may take a little long for us to get back to you, we have two administrators in our Public Works office, and they get, at a minimum, 150 calls a day. I was astonished, if I got 150 calls a day, you probably wouldn't hear from me for like two months. So, they do a really good job juggling the influx of calls. And then, last night, we did the Pottstown Water Authority, which was pretty interesting. I want to thank Josh Park and the members of Branch Life Church. They went out and built a ramp for Ms. Johnson.
Hey, guys, fine, good.
One of the displaced families, we had her here, she was homecoming queen.
Yeah.
And she is disabled and is in a wheelchair, and her parents have been carrying her in and out of the house, and we have been trying to get someone to build a ramp, and so these gentlemen from the church came out and built a ramp, and so I'm grateful for that. I want to thank Elaine Schaefer and School of River Greenways, they did Ride for the River. I had the honor of sending off the three groups of riders, and somehow got roped into participating next year. It was nice to see people in our community, though, that I never actually, like, see biking. I saw David Charles, and Nicole Metz, and Howard Brown, so council, because I got roped into Sojourn this year, and now I'm getting roped into Ride for the River. One of you have low expectations, one of you is joining me for a bike ride, for Ride for the River next year.
He's sitting next to you.
This one. I want to thank Parks and Rec, Kathy Peretti, Mike Murphy, and Frankie Strunk for putting together another successful Veterans Day. I was honored to speak, and I want to thank Borough Council for voting and passing the, I'm sorry, oh, you voted on the dedication of the Memorial Park, Veterans Island, and I was finally able to officially name and dedicate Veterans Island at Memorial Park, so thank you. I want to congratulate Potts Grove's former athletic director, Gary Duranzo, on retirement. Southside Social Club has opened, Vance Joffe is the owner there, if you haven't been, check it out, it's, there's a membership, it's $100 a year, I believe. He was nice enough to have us in, and Trinidad threw Lisa a nice little, tiny little birthday gathering, so it's very nice and quaint, it's very cool in there, so check it out. I want to thank Hobart's Run and Montgomery County Community College for hosting the Community Leaders Breakfast Meeting this morning. I also got my COVID booster and my flu shot, so if you haven't done that yet, please do so. And unfortunately, I've been working a lot, as you know, with the victims of the explosion, and unfortunately, two of the homes are gonna take a little work in getting rebuilt, or rehabbed, or what have you, because there's a lot of title issues, and so I have offered my legal services free of charge to help uncloud the title and open estates, and try to get those properties into the hands of the people that live there. All right, so that was last month. Coming up tomorrow, 10/6 is the Virtual Fall Festival of Gratitude, it's the cluster's large, largest annual fundraising event, part of the Amazing Raise, the link is available on their website, it is free, it's 25 minutes, it starts at 7:00. Saturday, the 8th, the North End Swim Club is having their Fall Festival, which I'm judging costume contests, that's from 2:00 to 5:00, they have food, music, games, and I think some more, as we had some more last year, that was one. On Saturday, 10/15, from 10:00 to 12:00, Montgomery County Community College is having their Fall Open House in person, you can tour the campus, learn about admissions and enrollment, and most importantly, how to pay for college, and there will be snacks and giveaways. If you can't make that date, they have an online open house, October 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00, and an in-person at the Blue Bell Campus on October 29th, from 10:00 to 12:00. Also, on Saturday, October 15th, the Farm is from 9:00 to 1:00, they are having their fundraising event at the market, and then, I believe they're having Halloween Glow Games and like a glow scavenger hunt, and that's from 6:00 to 9:00. Also, on Saturday, the 15th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at Mount Olive Baptist Church, we have a Town Hall meeting for safeguarding against gun violence, and I believe that is hosted by the churches. On Wednesday...
Vocal pastors, yep.
The global pastors.
You're right.
On, sorry, on Wednesday, October 19th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, Madeline Dean is having a Town Hall in Montgomery County Community College, that's in North Hall, Room 202. Sorry, October's really busy, everybody likes to do everything in October, and on the same day.
I know.
We were at the Challenger this morning for our Community Leaders Breakfast Meeting, so I learned a lot about, like, upcoming science stuff. So, if anyone is interested in, there's a documentary called Good Night Opie, I believe, about the rover that landed on Mars. Tickets are free, it's at United Artists, King of, oh, sorry, Regal Cinema in King of Prussia, on October 19th at 7:00 PM. If you go to the Montgomery County Communities College's website, you can sign up. Thursday, October 20th, and Friday, October 21st, on the 300 block of King Street is the YWCA's Street Art Restoration and Painting. Last year, we installed the Black Lives Matter, and this year, I believe, we're adding to that and restoring it, if you would like to participate and paint, 10 to 4:00, and you can register on their website. Also, on the 20th, from 5:00 to 7:45, at the YMCA is their Halloween event. Then, on Saturday, October 22nd, you might as well just stay here all day, because you're gonna be here all day. So, starting at 10:00 AM at Riverfront Park, the YWCA is having their One Mile Race for Education, from 10:00 to 5:00 at Edgewood Cemetery, they're doing the Edgewood Cemetery Cleanup and Art Fair/Festival, if you haven't been, it's very cool. If you don't want to help clean up, that's okay too, you can go shop and, like, look at the vendors and watch people plant flowers and trees and such, but if you have a weed whacker and you feel like helping, they really, really need your help, so I have a flyer here, if anyone is interested, if you would like to be an artist or a vendor, call Bronwyn at 484-235-7875, you can have a table for $40, and it's $35 if you donate a handcrafted item for the raffle. You don't have to register for the cleanup, please just come and help. Also, on that day, we have the last day of the YWCA's Week Without Violence, from 11:00 to 3:00, it's their block event, like we had last year. This year, the focus is on centering survivors, there's gonna be family activities, food, music, and vendors. Participation helps lift the voices and needs of survivors of violence, and it really builds the community that helps these survivors have a voice. So, please come out and support the YWCA and their initiatives. Also, that day, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Memorial Park, there's the Cheese Toberfest fundraiser for Tri, is that not right?
Actually, it's moved to Riverfront Park.
Okay.
I'll update on that in my report.
Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, it's a different location this year.
Really?
Is it still from 12:00 to 3:00? Do we know?
Yes.
Okay. And that's by the Tri-County Active Adult Day Center, I will be judging again this year, so someone will need to roll me home. Then, that night, you can work off your grilled cheese and participate in our Halloween Parade from 5:00 to 7:00. Is that correct? Starting at Goodwill Fire Company, please contact Rotary if you would like to participate. I believe I will be on the yellow VW bus again for Halloween, so if there's any kids that want to join me, please feel free. And then, October 31st, of course, is Halloween, and trick-or-treating is from 5:30 this year to 8:00. Couple more things for Save the Date, November 8th is Election Day, please, please, please do not forget to vote. Each vote is extremely important and has an impact on our quality of life, our access to healthcare, education, infrastructure repairs, pothole repairs, natural disaster funds, climate, anything you can think of. Each vote affects and impacts everyone from age zero to 125-plus, so please, please do your civic duty. November 5th is Community Day at the Challenger Center, Montgomery County Community College, there's two missions happening that day, registration is happening soon, so please check their website, because space is limited. And November 13th, Hobart's Run is having their 5K fundraising event for their collaborative neighborhood improvement initiatives, that is at Riverfront Park, registration begins at 8:00, the race begins at 9:00, and sponsorships are available, please check their website if you are interested. A couple of announcements, there is a, sorry, Foster Grandparents Program that is, that links grandparents with youth in the community for mentoring and fellowship. They have grandparents for the program, but they need more, so they need 78 more grandparents, and ladies and gentlemen, grandparents apparently qualifies at age 55.
Ooh, thank you.
So, anyone 55 and over, if you would like to be a foster grandparent and help out some of the kids in the neighborhood, that would be great. And I believe the Y is putting that on the YMCA, sorry, YWCA. And also, October is Birthday Month for all of us in Montgomery County, so I'd like to wish Mayor Jenna Antonowitz of Royersford, Mayor Aide Sand Riggins, Wright Riggins of Collegeville, very Happy Birthday Month, and Jenna Armato, who also shares my birthday on the 30th, so, thank you.
Just to follow up on the, on the food donation list, I was, I was responding, but I think my mic was off. I do believe that's a typo error, but I can find out for you and have that for Monday.
Thank you.
Updated list.
And just one correction clarification, the Halloween Parade is on October 22nd.
From 4 to...
From 4, it's starting at 4 o'clock.
Yeah, oh, I said 5, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
4 to 7.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Keller, your manager's report.
All right, thank you, everyone, and good evening, I've got a couple items of note to discuss with you tonight, so Genesis Housing is conducting an update to its Washington Street Neighborhood Plan. The last plan they did was about 10 years ago, and I think they had a community meeting on September 22nd to review the draft plan, so feel free to get in touch with Genesis for more information and to review the draft plan. As I noted earlier, Cheese Toberfest is moving the location to Riverfront Park this year due to wet conditions at Memorial Park, so if you recall, council previously approved the Beer Garden at Memorial Park, so this change in location might have to be re-approved again by council, so we'll all discuss that with the solicitor to see if we need to add that on for Monday night, but the location is, is changed. We received notice on several grants that we had out there, we secured $125,000 from DCED for Chestnut Street and South Street Park improvements, we also secured $85,000 from DC and RC2P2 for South Street Park improvements, and secured $25,000 from William and Dorothy Yack Family Foundation, Riverfront Park, Manantoni Waterway, and the Pedestrian Bridge Restoration. An update on the bridge, the pedestrian bridge in Memorial Park, so that, DEP permit has been submitted for that bridge to be reconstructed, it'll take about 60 to 90 days before we receive approval from DEP, and in the meantime, engineers are assembling the bid package for bidding at the end of the year, hoping for a spring 2023 execution on that one, so that's something that a lot of people have been waiting for. And then, the final work at Sunstrom Field, that'll be completed mid-October, and that was to install new drainage... and that was to install new drainage, replacing the backstop and dugouts and, and replacing some of the concrete work in the spectator areas and also to correct the A D A um, access. And then lastly, we were awarded a hundred and forty thousand through the flood mitigation program for arch repair at twelve hundred High Street. So we had originally requested five hundred thousand, which means it still leaves us with a construction deficit of a hundred and thirty-five thousand and engineering deficit of a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand uh, before we would have all the grant funds to fully uh, cover that project. Um, we also did uh, follow up per council's direction. We issued uh, the notice to Mascara to execute the one-year uh, extension on the trash contract. There'll be more discussion later. Um, and then just a reminder that Columbus Day is uh, Monday, October tenth. Therefore, the council meeting will be moved to Tuesday, the eleventh.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Excellent.
Be here one day.
Yeah. Um, as far as the budget presentation, is that you or Marley?
Yes, uh, Marley and I are gonna, are gonna conduct that.
Great.
So just give me a minute to get everything um, switched around. All right, I get to come down here for a change, which is different. All right, uh, so, thank you for the opportunity for, to allow us to present the budget. I know uh, we've been working with staff, uh, our finance director, Marley Boone, and I have been working with staff over the past several months um, to, to bring this uh, budget together for everyone. And um, you know, I, I just wanna reiterate that the borough's mission is to provide responsive, innovative, and cost-effective services, and that's really what we try to do here every day, and that's what we try to do um, with, with our budget. Fortunately, uh, this year, um, I think we are starting off in probably the best uh, position um, since I've been here with the borough, the six years that, that I've been here. Um, couple of the, the cost drivers that we're looking at in the twenty twenty-three budget are um, wage increases, um, insurance uh, increases, and higher costs of, of materials and, and services due, due to the economy. However, as we'll get into later, uh, we are seeing our assessments uh, kind of level off a little bit, and some of our other uh, tax revenues rise. Um, but we have kept our kind of development-related revenues um, very conservative, um, because with all the property transfers that are going on this year, the, the, the building permits, the renovations, um, that did add to uh, our bottom line uh, pretty healthily, but for budget purposes, we, we, we budgeted back to like two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. So, um, where we're at right now, um, an overall deficit of three hundred and forty-three thousand, and um, our initial cut at this uh, looks at a three point four-four overall uh, tax increase or an overall tax millage of fourteen point four-two-four, so it's about a, a half, half a mil uh, millage increase. And um, this is across all funds, and right now, I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, Marley Boone, to take you through some of the details on the general.
Good evening. I'm gonna begin highlighting items for the overall budget, looking at trends that helped forecast um, for twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'll highlight these items, and then we'll get into more detail as the um, presentation progresses. Tax assessments remain relatively unchanged at seven hundred and sixty million. Local and a, local enabling taxes, including E I T and L S T, increased and are on trend with pre-pandemic revenues. Uh, building permits and property transfers remain conservative, and we have wage increases for AFSME management and police on an average of four percent. The M M O and four oh one A expenses total two point six million and eighty-eight thousand dollars respectively. And across all funds, major capital purchases include two police vehicles and station upgrades, one licensing and inspection vehicle, two public works vehicles funded through sewer lines, that's Fund eighteen, and one fire vehicle and equipment. Next. So the chart um, shows the breakdown of the percentage of revenue per tax entity. The borough taxes encompass twenty-five percent, so as an example, a real estate tax bill of four thousand dollars total will result in a hundred, in one thousand dollars of borough tax revenue. Next slide. Uh, Justin touched on it, on it briefly, but the, the graph highlights the um, decline of assessment values since two thousand and five. However, we are seeing these level out um, and, and remain steady since two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, and if you recall, that big drop-off that you see there in two, two thousand and seventeen, that was um, when Tower Health went nonprofit status, um, so that was kind of that big, that big decline there.
That's when I moved here.
In twenty twenty-two, there were three hundred and forty tax-exempt parcels. That's five less from last year, or from, yeah, from twenty twenty-one. And as a result, if all of these tax-exempt parcels, excluding borough and school properties, pay taxes, we would generate an extra revenue of two point five million dollars for the borough. So contractual wage obligations for AFSME are a four percent increase, for the police, a three point five percent increase. And for management, there's a four, four percent base increase with one percent lump sum payout. There are also several positions that received an increase higher than five percent, but not more than eight percent, and that was to align them with the salaries of their peers. Uh, the added positions include two police officers, one part-time parking enforcement officer, two utilities maintenance operators, and two part-time fire inspectors. Uh, the, go ahead.
I just wanna touch on a couple of things here, so, you know, I, I mean, I think we're in a, in an incredibly fortunate position to be coming in with an initial three point, you know, four and some change budget, um, while also being able to add uh, two police officers. Um, you know, I, I think that uh, that, that's something that's gonna be important for this community in the upcoming years. Um, you know, there's just uh, it, it's a lot harder work these days, and there seem to be more uh, criminals out there in general. So it is something that uh, we are recommending. And um, the uh, part-time parking enforcement officer, uh, we really um, would like to have coverage at uh, at different times of the day that we don't have coverage for now. Um, so nights and, and weekends, adding some more coverage there, uh, that's what that position would be for. Um, the utility maintenance operators, this will allow for some flexibility at the, at the sewer and the water plants. Um, we have a lot of people that are going to be retiring in, in the years that are upcoming as well, so that'll help to kind of provide a little bit of buffer for that, too. Um, and then we are looking at starting a uh, restarting a business license uh, that will be tied to a, a fire inspection. Um, so what we're recommending is bringing in two part-time fire inspectors to help us with that. We would be focusing on um, in-person fire inspections for uh, restaurants, uh, medical facilities, and educational facilities. And we will require all the other businesses to do, to do a self-reporting inspection, so we will send them a checklist, and then they would have to go through the checklist and verify that they've got working smoke detectors, clear exits, so on and so forth. So that's just a little, a little bit of detail on um, some of the positions that we're recommending to add.
Uh, so the twenty twenty-three M M O expenses, um, they're, they're based on gross wages of the prior year, so they're based on this year for the contribution of next year. Um, the non-uniform plan expenses, nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and the police expenses, one point seven million dollars. Um, there is an increase of uh, ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that was due to um, one police officer hired in twenty twenty-two to fill a vacant position. The four oh one A contribution rose to eighty-eight thousand dollars, an increase of sixty-two thousand. And while this expense will continue to rise as we bring on new non-uniform employees, over time, it will save the borough um, money long-term because they're not tied to a traditional pension plan. And then just to add that, the state aid that we received to off, offset the M M O expense was higher um, than, than we projected for the budget, and it will continue to increase as we hire new police officers. So for the end of twenty, twenty twenty-two, we're projecting an overall increase of revenue, and that's mainly due to um, residential runner, renovation and property transfer activity. Building permits were up fifty-three percent, and property transfer revenue increased a hundred and four percent from twenty twenty-one. Local enabling tax revenue has increased twenty-one percent, and this includes earned income, local service tax, and per capita taxes. Uh, they, we continue to see the increase due to higher wages and employment levels return to the pre-pandemic era. Residential real estate property values have increased eight percent due to an ex, an explosive housing market, um, but are not reflected in the overall assessment that has declined by one point four million dollars. And then with inflation rates set to peak at eight point three percent at the end of twenty twenty-two, we've, we've had to increase expensive, expenses accordingly. Uh, the, the next portion of the presentation will um, detail specific fund budgets and the capital savings plans for um, future expenditures. The general fund uh, twenty twenty-three budget is fifteen million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. This will result in a deficit of three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And it will cause an increase just shy of half a millage point, and a total proposed mills of ten point five nine zero. Um, for properties ass, at, assessed at a hundred thousand dollars will be, there will be an annual tax bill increase of less than fifty dollars at forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And uh, we'll continue the capital savings plan contribution of a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three. And then um, the projected estimated assessment for twenty twenty-three is the seven hundred and sixty million dollars. Um, will, we will receive the final estimate in November. This will generate seven point five million dollars in tax revenue. And below, you can see um, the real estate tax revenue compared to the millage increases, and those are typically a reflection of wage, wage obligations, increased insurance costs, and a reduction in, in assessed property values.
All right, thanks, Marley. So um, I'm gonna take it over from here and um, review the, the capital plans. I'm not gonna go over everything in these plans, but um, fortunately, we were able to start a capital savings plan for, in twenty twenty, for things that we know that are going to have to be replaced at some point in the future. So rather than uh, waiting until uh, something breaks and a big bill comes due, and we have to hit the taxpayers all at once with a big tax increase, we try to spread that out um, over, over the years and try to be more proactive, uh, because it's, these are things that we know that we're gonna have to deal with at some point um, in the future. So some of our um, expenditures that we're planning out of our capital savings fund, which we, we have been making contributions of a hundred thousand dollars a year, every year since um, two thousand and twenty, and we plan to make another hundred thousand contribution in twenty twenty-three. Um, some of the improvements uh, that we're looking at are a new uh, H V A C rooftop unit uh, for the Borough Hall Building, this, the building, and a lot of the things in it are over twenty years old at this point. Um, we're also looking at coating the roof. Uh, we have money in there for stormwater arch repair, uh, a boiler, a boiler replacement, and then one of the newer things this year is fleet, fleet replacement. A lot of our fleet vehicles are um, a, almost ten years old, if not, if not older. A lot of them are still in pretty good shape, cause we don't, we don't put a lot of miles on them. Um, but we, we kind of bought all the vehicles at the same time, and so we wanna start putting some money aside now, so that when we need to start replacing them, we have the money av, available, instead of just kind of shelling out um, a, a big lump sum in, in one, in one or two years. So um, we have a, a plan to uh, set aside fifty thousand for fleet replacement. If we don't use that, and we determine we don't need it in twenty twenty-three, then that just gets moved to twenty twenty-four. Um, in fact, that's what happened with the stormwater arches, because we had a grant, so we had fifty thousand uh, budgeted for that this year, and we're not gonna use it, so we moved that to twenty twenty-three. Now we have a hundred thousand total in there for, for arches that we would use towards um, grants to, to match mostly. And then the other thing that we're looking at um, is how we're gonna finish out the year. As Marley mentioned, um, some of our revenues, uh, were a little bit higher than expected, and uh, we'll sit down with the finance committee at the end of the year and determine um, if there's money left over. We would like to um, throw that into the savings plan for additional uh, fleet vehicles in the future. And we um, are going to, at least on the civilian side, um, start to evaluate um, the effectiveness and the ability for us to use um, hybrid vehicles. You'll see in twenty twenty-two, we have uh, this year planned a Borough Hall, a parking lot paving project, and we're going to be hoping to get that out this year. If not, um, we'll, we'll get it done in twenty twenty-three. And with that project, we're gonna start to lay the infrastructure necessary for um, plug-in electric uh, vehicles. So we'll put the conduit and things like that in a while, while we're, while we have the parking lot torn up. The American Rescue Plan Act, so the A R P A money, the borough received two point three million um, as a part of the federal government's COVID response. And um, we have a list here of how we would like to allocate this money. Uh, you will see that most of it um, is going towards infrastructure needed uh, improvements that basically have to happen in the next couple years. Um, we are planning for five hundred thousand in stormwater arch rehabilitation. If we, if you recall, we put in a grant for eight hundred thousand for Moser Road Bridge Rehabilitation. Um, but if we didn't get the grant, we um, obligated eight hundred thousand of A R P A, so that we could, we could pay for that. That's the decking and some of the joints that need to be replaced there. We have two outfalls at the Schoolkill River that are in bad shape that need to be replaced. Um, we're also looking at uh, buying equipment so that we can make our own roadway brine. And what this will do is help us get out ahead of storms, um, by getting coatings on. It will reduce the amount of plowing that we have to do and the damage that's incurred with the roadway. So we think that's a good, a good use of money, and I, and I think there's, there is some desire in the finance committee to start looking for that equipment now. Um, uh, some of the other things that we're looking at are for the airport. Um, there hasn't been a lot of T L C there for quite a while. We need to paint um, a couple buildings there, a couple roofs uh, before they start to rust further, and um, some paving of a, uh, the, the maintenance hangar apron. Um, the Parks Department, the ones that are, the ones that are shown in, shown in green, we've already allocated this money and spent this money. So um, those are installation of remote locking and C C T V at the Spray Park, as well as um, some other park supplies, materials, things like playground mulch when it, they get washed away by floods and things like that. Um, we have uh, allocated four hundred thousand for the Memorial Park Bridge, and we have allocated a hundred and eighteen thousand for the Sunstrom Match. That will turn green soon, um, because that project will be, will be complete. So in all uh, parks, we've uh, allocated or spent about two hundred thousand dollars there. That money has to be obligated by twenty twenty-four, it has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So we're starting to lay the, the blueprint for this now. The Parks Fund, um, the, the budget is balanced in the Parks Fund. It won't require any tax increase. Uh, they do maintain their capital savings, funding for short-term capital. Um, and some of the big projects that they're uh, looking at um, this year in grants are the Pollock Park Contamination Remediation, and then um, funding for the Memorial Park Bridge. and Remediation, and then funding for the Memorial Park Bridge, and then also a capital purchase of a ball field maintenance machine. The Trash Fund, right now, we have a deficit of four-hundred-and-five thousand in the Trash Fund. We do have enough reserves in there to cover that deficit, and we are recommending covering the deficit by reserves. We decreased the amount that is transferred from reserves to balance Trash Fund each year by two-hundred thousand dollars. So last year, we balanced Trash Fund with six-hundred thousand dollars. This year, we're balancing it with two-hundred thousand dollars, with a two-hundred thousand dollars to get it down to four-oh-five. We will continue to make changes and adjustments in that fund over the next couple of years to get that deficit down to zero. Debt Service Fund, this fund is, is balanced. Basically, the only debt that the Borough has is the, for the Borough Garage Facility, and the bond for this will be paid off in 2028. And I think we're gonna be discussing some options with the Finance Committee about potentially looking at different ways we could, we could pay that off to save on interest. The Fire Fund, we have a balanced budget here as well, a budget of two million dollars. We provide funding, as you know, about one-point-two million to the four independent fire companies for their operations and for our fire protection in the Borough each year. So we have that in there, and then the rest is essentially for operations and equipment and things of that nature. So we also are very serious about contributing to the Capital Fund for things like trucks and other improvements, so that we're not trying to come up with that money later on down the line. But some of the highlights for the budget was, we did renew our fire service agreement with West Potts Grove Township, so that gives us an additional revenue of eighty-nine thousand. And then they are covering eleven-point-seven, eleven-point-five percent of workers' comp and healthcare. At this point, we're using those funds to potentially upgrade and maintain vehicles and equipment, and then we're putting the rest into capital savings. I mentioned the two part-time fire inspectors that we're looking to add, and the allotments there to the fire companies are shown. The state aid relief, 2022 did see an increase of forty, of about forty-two thousand. We expect that to increase as well. But basically, all these things kind to, kind of came together, and what really came together was, really have to give Jerry Kezak, our Budget Analyst and our Fire Chief Frank Hand, for coming up with this idea to pay off our ladder truck early. We had the funds and reserves to be able to pay that off early, so we are now out of debt on that. And what that allowed us to do was, instead of making a debt service payment, we're gonna pay that, we're gonna pay that back to reserves and increase our contribution to the Fire Capital Fund by a hundred thousand dollars a year for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in 2023. So you can see our, our plan expenses, 2022, we had budgeted five-hundred-and-seventy thousand for a new fire engine, but we got a grant of about four-hundred thousand. So, you know, that money stayed in capital, so that was just additional money that we have to work with later on, since we were able to get the grant. The only thing we're really planning for 2023 is some equipment and maintenance and upgrades, about ten thousand dollars worth, and about a hundred thousand dollars for potentially a new, a new vehicle and equipment for fire inspectors. We have to still talk about whether one vehicle or two vehicles is needs to that. That might get adjusted a little bit. But then you can see our future, which isn't on the chart here, but we have future expenditures, and really what we're putting the majority of the money away for is to purchase a new engine truck in 2028 and a new ladder truck in 2037. So we're really thinking long-term here and really trying to set the Fire Department up to be very sound financially and making sure that we're managing our, our fleet appropriately. And to wrap it up, I'll refer to this slide. So you can see that there was a period of years, 2013 through 17, where we had barely any tax increase. I wasn't here, but I assume there was probably some money from reserves that were being used to balance. We were able to get away with that for a few years, and then in 2018 and 19, we really spiked. So, you know, we're, we're trying to keep up with what everyone else is with rising costs of fuel and goods and services and everything else, but making sure that we're keeping up with that year by year instead of every five years or every decade. So we are recommending smaller tax increases each year to keep us in a good financial position. So just to wrap it up, this is a summary again of all funds. You can see the only fund that we have a deficit in is the General Fund. I did forget to mention on, with the ARPA funding, one of the things that allowed us to get the General Fund deficit down, about a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from what it, from what it was previously, was we are going to plan to use ARP funding as our grant matches. So usually, we would budget that out of the General Fund. We would use ARPA for that, and that helped us get down to that, that three-point, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-dollar deficit. So that's pretty much what we have, and I just wanna thank all the directors and the Finance Team for working hard to, to put this together. We're not done yet. We're gonna go back, we're gonna make more cuts, we're gonna come back to you next month. There's some things that we don't have, for instance, like health insurance. We're still negotiating there. We know there's gonna be an increase. We've budgeted for an increase, but we're in negotiations, and we're not sure where we're gonna end up. So at this point, we can take any questions that you may have. Yes?
Can you just clarify the last thing you said about the deficit and using the ARP funds?
Yeah. Yep. So, you know, every year, we need to, we need to set aside, I'm sorry, I'll just stay here, I guess. Every year, we need to set aside a couple hundred thousand dollars for grant matches. In order to get the grants, we've gotta put up the money for the match. So what we did in previous years is that we took that from the General Fund. If we would've taken that from the General Fund instead of using ARPA, this year, our deficit would be about a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars higher than what we're showing now. Yep. Anyone else?
Well, three percent is, three percent range is a lot better than, I remember I still have nightmares about, you know, 2018, we started off at eighteen or nineteen percent. That was horrible. And just, just care, care asked, the two police officers that we've looked at higher, they're actually replacing two retiring officers, correct, they're not?
These will be, it's kind of, I mean, it's, that's an interesting question, but no, these will be new, additional officers, so it'll bring us up to forty-eight, forty-eight. But I, I understand, I think, what you're thinking. We have a lot of retirements coming up, so having two additional officers will help buffer that a little bit when we've got like a, you know, maybe a little gap in between when we're, when the officer retires and we're able to bring the, the new one in. But no, to be clear, we are looking and asking to increase from forty-six to forty-eight.
Perfect.
Anyone else?
Agreeing none? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll continue working.
Okay, next, there's a zoning variance request. Mr. Garner?
Yes, this is for property at 381 West High Street. It's a convenience store, mini-market, and a portion of the property also has auto repair. The hearing has been scheduled for the end of October. The applicant is requesting two variances. Under our borough ordinance, there is a three-day limitation for the storage of vehicles while they're being repaired. That's actually part of a conditional use that you guys approved a number of years ago for the property. The applicant's seeking some additional time to allow vehicles to remain on the property in, while they're being repaired. So they're seeking a variance from that section. They're also proposing an accessory structure to store things inside as opposed to outside. That accessory structure is, I think, three-hundred-and-twenty square feet. That exceeds the requirement of two-hundred square feet, so they're seeking a variance to allow the structure to be slightly larger than what the ordinance permits. Again, it's council's call as what you wanna do, but this looks like a relatively innocuous request, and certainly, staff is recommending that it just go to the zoning hearing board, for the zoning hearing board to make a decision unless you guys feel otherwise.
Any comment?
I understand what the, the first request, it's taking longer to get repair parts in, so the vehicle has to sit on the lot longer than normal, and that makes a lot of sense. Okay? So we'll list it for Tuesday night.
Tuesday.
And again, we don't have to list it at all if you don't wanna take any action, so it would, it's up, it's certainly up to you that we can, we can list it as possible action.
That would be Lisa's.
Yeah, I think that's the second ward, so that's Lisa's.
Okay. See if she has anything to say.
It's her word. Okay, twelve is a resolution. DCNR?
Yes, so as I mentioned, we did receive funding for Chestnut and South Street Parks, and lucky for us, DCNR opened up a bonus round this fall. So we are planning to apply and follow up with that money and with this grant for companion funding in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. With this grant, we're gonna look to put in and upgrade the project, add important place rubber, playground safety surfacing to the Chestnut Project and associated drainage improvements, including an underground retention basin. We'll also approach additional funding sources in 2023 to align the same additions for the South Street Park scope of work, and we anticipate and are hoping for 2024 execution on the projects once we have all the funding aligned. So these will include playground improvements, access improvements, stormwater management improvements, and other site amenity additions. So Parks Department and Director Lenhart certainly doing a good job tracking down these grants so that we can get other people to pay for it, and we don't have to.
I like that. Okay. There's no discussion, we'll add that for Tuesday. Give you that resolution. How about the Pico Green region?
Yeah, this is a grant that would pay for an arborist to assess and catalog the trees in Riverfront Park. It would also have them develop a hazardous tree maintenance policy in high hazard areas, such as like near trails and pavilions and things like that. And then it would allow to assess individual trees to identify criteria, determine whether or not they're a potential hazard. So that's about ten, ten thousand dollars that we're requesting for that grant, I think.
That's correct. It's companion funding for a grant we're already holding from the Schoolville Highlands.
Okay.
Grant program. So we have half the funds for that project, we're seeking the other half for the Pico Green.
Great, thank you for that.
Okay. Very good. Add that. Any? Fourteen, for our animal control officer. Mr. Garner?
Yeah, I think you have in your packet a proposal from our current ACO.
Yes.
Seeking some increase in compensation. It appears that the last time we looked at this, it was early 2021. There is a request to increase that beginning in January of 2023. Hourly rate proposal or request is going from twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour or per call. The information's in your packet. There's money in the budget to consider that request. We're seeking council's motion to allow an addendum to be prepared to the contract to reflect it. We'll present it to you, and you can decide exactly what you want to provide as far as an increase. I think the ACO is also looking to be reimbursed for costs for some training. That's still under discussion internally by the administration. So those are the components of the change, and we'll be back to you if you authorize us to move forward with the addendum.
Okay. And we'll do so on Tuesday. All right, fifteen is the Hugh Associates Recycling Data.
Yes, so they, they've been our grant consultant for the recycling and trash grants in the Borough. I think last year, they brought in about ninety thousand dollars for us. These are state grants. They're not as big as they used to be, but it still helps. And they are requesting a five-year contract to prepare the Borough's trash grants for seventy-five hundred dollars per year for five years.
Okay. Right? All right, we'll issue that on Tuesday evening. Sixteen, Mosaic Fall Decorations.
Yes, so this year, Haunt on High is gonna have a little bit of a different look and festive look to it. This request is to allow the Mosaic Community Arts Committee to prepare for Haunt on High with decoration of cornstalks temporarily tied onto light poles on the corners of the two-hundred and four-hundred blocks, as well as the clock tower on Charlotte Street. The insaw they're proposing is for October eighteenth and the tear-down on November second. I haven't reviewed this fully with staff yet. I don't really see many issues with the light poles or the, or the clock tower, but one thing to look out for would be to limit decorating traffic light poles so as to not obstruct the ped push buttons or the traffic ped crossing signals. So we'll discuss that with, with Public Works, but certainly, light poles, those aren't a problem.
Right. So you'll come back with conditions on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, list that, we'll listen to the conditions. Sixteen, Mosaic, oh no, did that. Halloween Block Party, Miss Friedland, North Franklin Street, again.
Yes, so on October thirty-first, they would like a block party from five to nine.
Okay. All right. Add that to the agenda. Eighteen is Community Block Party for Victory Christian Life Center.
Yes, this is also on the thirty-first, from four to eight PM.
All right. We'll add that one. Nineteen, YWCA Road Closure.
Yeah, so this is part of YWCA's maintenance obligation when council authorized them to install the mural on King Street. So they would like to conduct a closure for a three-day period, and at the end of that three-day period, it will conclude with an event. So the work will take place on the eastern side of the three-hundred block of King Street from seven AM to six PM on October twentieth and twenty-first, and from seven AM to three PM on October twenty-second, so that we, they can reopen King Street in time to alleviate some of the traffic concerns caused by the Halloween Parade at four o'clock that day. So we're grateful that they're able to work with us on that. And then the block party event will be on the twenty-second from eleven AM to three PM.
Okay. And we'll list that on Tuesday.
Yep.
Thank you. Comments from citizens? None. Any virtual?
Yeah.
No?
No chats or no email comments, so.
Okay. Counselors, general discussion. Counselor Proscal, ready?
Got invited by Ron Garza to the Juan Carlos Fiesta to celebrate their liquor license opening, so it actually was real nice, and wish him luck.
Counselor Lapidenski? Counselor Lindsey?
So the Ricketts, oop, sorry. Sorry, my mic was off. So the Ricketts Center will have their blood drive with NAACP on October thirteenth from two to seven, and they're asking for African-Americans to come because, for sickle sale, and only African-Americans can donate for sickle sale. If you, if no one knew that. Coffee with a Cop is on October seventh at nine AM, Smith Plaza. Oh, and I think that's it. I think that's all I have. I have something else, but I can't remember, so I'm gonna have to do it on Tuesday.
Tuesday, on Tuesday. Tuesday, on Tuesday.
October and Monday.
Counselor Kirkland, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Anyone else out there?
No, no other counselors appear to be online.
Okay. Mayor?
I forgot one thing. I wanted to thank Catnaps of Pottstown and Cheryl Miller, our animal control officer, and the neighbors of Chicken Hill will be happy to know that one of the displaced families from the explosion had 10 cats, none of which were spayed or neutered, and they are outdoor cats, so we've arranged for them all to be spayed and neutered, which they are taking care of as we speak, so, thank you.
I have nothing more to add other than to announce we will have an executive session. We'll be discussing litigation and personnel. We'll take no action, and we will not be coming back for a meeting. So meeting adjourned.